The Citizen Mike Show.
Hey, welcome to the Citizen Mike Show. Thanks for tuning in. We do appreciate it. My name is Mike Brodinsky. On my right, the editor of the Record Journal, Ralph Thomaselli, and a special guest back in the studio, Aaron Corso, Republican member of the Wallingford Board of Education. Aaron, thanks for coming back on the show.
Thank you for having me.
Things are really hopping with the Board of Ed these days.
They sure are.
Yeah, so you guys had a big meeting on December 10. A ton of people at the Lyman Hall Auditorium. You guys were there in, you know, in front of the room. Take us through that a little bit. How did you feel the meeting went?
So, my intention, and I think the Board's intention of the meeting, was to gather more We are, you know, just in a very early premature stages of conducting this facility study to help guide our future decisions for the buildings in Wallingford. So, there was a lot of people, it was very well attended, there was a lot of, you know, the Teachers' Union was there, a lot of parents were there, so I was happy to see a lot of people coming out and voicing their opinions.
Yeah. The Board certainly expressed their opinion, and you could kind of count the non-votes and see where heads were in some cases, but where is it going now? What's the next step? And maybe take us through the next couple of months, what you think is going to happen?
Yep, so we had asked the consultants to go back on option three and give us some figures, how option three would look if we were to renovate two high schools. Would we renovate them both to be comprehensive high schools? Or would we renovate them sort of in pathways, kind of how they're happening now? So, they're going to come back to us with that. I really wanted to leave option six on the table, not two middle schools, not one middle school, to split it into two middle schools, but leave the option of consolidating the high schools on the table. And obviously, there's still the status quo.
So, let's, we've got to re-translate a little bit. What is option three? What is option six? And what is option one? And I'm going to, I'm going to put my, I'm going to take the first pass at it, put my editorial gloss on it, and then we'll go to Aaron. Option three, as I remember it, is the most expensive option, the cost of Wallingford, about $117 million. And briefly, I read that as renovating as new four schools.
Four schools.
Sheehan, Lyman Hall, Dag.
Moran.
And Moran. Then, and Aaron, this is a question for you really, I sensed that some Board members were interested in going even above and beyond the $117 million and change with mirror programs. So, for example, if you had nursing at Lyman Hall, you'd have nursing at Sheehan. If you had culinary at Lyman Hall, which you do now, you know, then you would have culinary at Sheehan, and that would be more money.
That would likely drive the cost of that project up. I can't imagine it wouldn't. So, that's one of the decisions or the additional information that the consultants will provide us, hopefully.
Option six was one high school, one middle school, and that was about, I don't know, in the 60 to 70 million?
Oh, I think it was like 59, 58, 59.
Yes, approaching 60, not quite 60 million. And then the status quo, that's option one. So, that's sort of a translation. Aaron, let me ask you about the process. Are you satisfied with how it's going? Does it seem too quick? Has it been too superficial for the decision-making stage you're at now?
Well, I think we're just in a kind of an overarching information gathering stage at this point. I really wanted to see a little bit more about the specific needs and what's really failing at the building level, but I think after we get through this portion, I expect to see an additional deeper study that would tell us a little bit more about what's going on in our buildings.
So, I got an impression, and after I share it with you guys, I'm going to go to Ralph because you weren't there, you saw a couple clips of we're going to show, but you also, you know, had a hand, you read the story that appeared in the Record Journal. I went there, I sat through it, I was on the sort of the right side, about halfway, you know, halfway up. And at this preliminary stage in the decision-making process, where just the barest minimum of facts are in, and there's conclusions being reached, in my view, by some Board members based on their comments and their questions, many of them are all in on the most expensive option, and there seems to be, based on how things are going, a bit of a herd mentality, steering slowly and surely this ship, even on this second meeting. There's only been two meetings, November 5 and December 10. This group think, which we learned about in this book, Mindset, that Superintendent Menzo, you know, promoted six or seven years ago, this group think seems to have set in already. I want to go to you and then to Aaron, to give her a chance to think about that, because she may not like what I just said, but we'll see in a minute. But you're, from your perspective, as sort of the man on the street, you just read the article?
Right.
What do you think so far about where we are in the process?
Well, I'm a little confused. Because I think about a month ago, I got the impression that the Board had started narrowing options and had a deadline to narrow it even further.
That, go ahead.
And then Sal Menzo was in the paper, Superintendent of Schools Sal Menzo, was in the paper maybe three or four weeks after that, saying, no, all options are on the table, and there's no hurry here. And I agree when I watched the clips from the meeting last night, that people seem to already have reached, at least some groups have reached conclusions about this.
Yeah, well, I didn't have any clips of Board members yet.
No.
We do future episodes, yeah.
Of the Teachers' Union, and there's clearly an organi, the Teachers' Union appears to have reached conclusions, and there seems to be a group of parents that also are speaking out.
So, Aaron, I want to go with you, but sort of a more narrow question. I just gave an opinion just a couple minutes ago, that it appeared to me, based on, you know, public comments, that some Board members were already all in on expensive options. Pass judgment on my judgment. What did you think about that?
So, I mean, I was at the meeting, obviously, and I hear what you hear, and I think that there are some Board members that kind of ran on a platform of repairing our facilities, so I would imagine that that person's all in. I wouldn't, I think we're still gathering information, I really do. I don't, I don't see, I think we're trying to get more information as to what those two option threes would look like. Personally, I'm, I don't feel as though I'm part of your herd that you, that you talk about.
I don't either, by the way. I don't either. So, let's make that clear.
Yeah, and as far as the group that was in the room, I think they're very afraid of potential change in our schools, and I think that's very premature at this point. You know, and I can imagine if I was a teacher in the district, and one of the options on the table is a loss of jobs, I would be concerned, but I, as a Board member, I'm more concerned with declining enrollment causing loss of jobs than any type of building project.
I just want to be clear about one thing. I use the word group think, herd mentality, I was referring to Board members. That's what I was referring to. Let's be very clear.
All right, because I took it as...
I was referring to Board members. That at this stage of the proceeding, as to the basic decision to go all in on a major renovation costing between 50 and 117 million, a surprising number are there, if not all of them.
Okay.
That's for a Board, and you would think a complicated decision, that it should be so detailed, should be based on a very detailed and thorough case, which has not yet been made, to even make, you know, to give public indications that you're all in, I was, I'm really surprised by that. But Aaron, it's back to you.
Like I said, I can't, I think that's actually premature, to say that you have Board members that are totally all in. I think we asked some pretty good questions, we asked for additional information. I understand why option one, which was status quo, why nobody really wanted to go with option one, that kind of got voted off the table at the first meeting.
That was a $17 million round.
Right, and I think that that was very familiar to all of us, and if we didn't see a need for some sort of improvements in our facilities, then we wouldn't have conducted a facility study to begin with. So, but, you know, status quo is, I wouldn't say it's off the table, because if we do this study and we come out with things that are not favorable to change, then we continue on the path that we were already on.
Ralph?
Well, I think I just wanted to make the point, because Aaron brought up running on a platform of repairing the schools. And I think everybody wants to repair the schools, but these options go way beyond repairing the schools.
Wait a minute, Ralph, are you saying no one ran on a platform of spending $117 million?
Well, I just don't remember...
Is that what you're saying? Because I want to get that out. Are you saying no one ran on a platform of spending 50 to 60 million dollars?
I don't remember it, and I'm glad, I'm glad she brought up repairs too, because there's, there's one clip, or there's one segment of a meeting that I watched, that to me might have, at least appeared bizarre.
Go ahead.
And it was Superintendent of Schools apparently explaining about where we, how we got into this process and why we're here, and it started with repairing bathrooms at Sheehan. And it seemed to, his explanation seemed to be that if we repair the bathrooms at Sheehan, that we have to renovate the whole school.
That it opens a can of worms.
Yeah, did I hear that wrong?
No, you heard it correctly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I think that that was an example, that was just one example of, do we go ahead and make these repairs now, or do we figure out, because there's quite a few that need to be done, or do we go, or do we do a comprehensive study of our facilities and figure out what our best plan is moving forward? Because we can continue to do it this way.
But, but I think it's a tough case to, and I want to move on, but I think it's going to be a really tough case to make to the Town Council and the Mayor, to say, well, I started out realizing I have to redo the bathroom, and now I'm here before you to redo the whole school. That's just not the way to do it.
Yeah. I actually, I don't under, I would love to have the councilors walk through the buildings with Deptula, Mark Deptula, have Mayor Dickinson walk through the buildings with Deptula, Mark Deptula, I think that would be a fabulous idea. Invite some reporters in, you guys, come on in and take a look at what's going on. So, it's not just what you're hearing throughout these brief meetings.
So, two points, and I want to go to, as soon as I make them, I want to go to Aaron to respond to each point. And one is, when the study was commissioned and when it was sort of rolled out, declining enrollment seemed to be the driving force, and that seems to be no longer pertinent. And what seems to be pertinent is something else, you know, upgrading the schools, renovating. And also, the state of the record, as we say in the law, the state of the evidence now is not that the schools need so much work, or even any work. It's just, you know, no one has come forward and say they're really in disrepair, no one has come forward and say things are breaking and falling apart, that the schools are in such bad shape, and this is very sudden, now to here, anecdotal, not based on an engineering, a dispassionate survey by someone who doesn't have a dog in the fight, but it's very jarring to hear that all these years, we thought the schools were in pretty good shape, and suddenly we find out, oh my God, they're not, on the basis of an architect and an engineer outsider. Certainly Sal Menzo never warned us, the Board of Ed never warned us, and some of the members of the Board of Ed are quite senior now, were there on the first school renovation project, no one has ever raised a flashing light that things are really bad in the schools, and that's still the state of the record. No one has said that. You go to these meetings, no one has said officially, speaking for the administration, under our watch, the schools are really bad. No one has said that yet. Ralph?
Well, interestingly, and we're going to get more into this.
And I promised Aaron we'd go to her, but you take it, and then we'll go to her.
But I just want to just, interestingly, among those who aren't saying the schools are falling apart, is the head of the Teachers' Union, who represents the teachers who work in the building.
Okay.
And usually, the union head is the first one to, or at least, is among those who would say the buildings need work, and apparently, he's not saying that.
Aaron, your thoughts? Your thoughts on our thoughts?
So, I think, I think that the Teachers' Union, like I said, is scared to lose jobs, and status quo is okay with them. And if we're looking at a building project, to me, it's exciting, it should be exciting, you know, but I'm not willing, I don't want to renovate for, because the declining enrollment is an issue for me. I don't want to see us sink 120, could be 150 million dollars into four schools, and 10 years down the line, we have 550 kids at Sheehan, and we have 800, 900 at Lyman Hall, and we can't run effective programming that way. So, I want more information about how we can move forward that's going to service our kids the best, in the best possible way. So, I, like I said, I understand why the teachers were there, but I thought it was a little premature. I was a little bit offended by the signs that said, put kids first, because isn't that what we're doing? You know, we're, that's what we're doing. So, yeah, I mean...
Let me change the subject radically.
Yeah.
The issue of test scores comes up, and a couple people that I run across this past week and just going about town, they said, yeah, but, you know, what about the test scores? I think there's one comment during this meeting about test scores. Aaron, talk to us about what relevance, if any, are test scores, and just address that generally, and then we'll go around the table here.
So, I think that that comment came from the teacher in Meriden, who lives here in Wallingford, and he talked about they renovated these two new buildings, and test scores hasn't, haven't improved. So, I don't think, I don't tie test scores into the renovation of facilities. I think a renovation of a facility would allow more creative programming. We all know college is very expensive these days, so if we can graduate our students who don't want to go to college with certain certificates out of certain programs, such as a CNA program, or a safe foods program through our culinary, if we can do that in our high school and get these kids to work, then, then we've done our job. And so, you know, I don't, I don't see how, I don't see the relevance in test scores in terms of whether or not we should renovate our facilities.
Ralph?
I agree. I don't tie test scores in renovations.
So do I. Shall we move on?
Well, that was a lengthy explanation on my part.
But it needed to be addressed.
You did well with it.
No, you did, because you, yeah. Maybe in another show, you know, down the road or something, we'll, you know, take that issue up again. So, Aaron, as you remember the comments from the audience in that room, where do you think the consensus was in the audience, or the schools of thought, the dominant schools of thought in the audience? And where do you think the administration stands? And I want to go back briefly, though, and where do you think the Board members stand?
The audience was clearly not wanting to consolidate high schools, they wanted to keep everything the way it is currently. And we did hear a lot about sports, we heard a lot about the traditions in town, we heard a lot about Powderpuff, and then at the end, you know, somebody, a parent stood up and said, well, it's not really about these traditions, it's not about Lyman Hall versus Sheehan, it's about big versus small. And I actually agree with that. I just happen to be on the other side of her argument, because I think we can offer more when we consolidate our schools, whether we do it now, or whether it happens 10 years down the road. I just think that we can offer more when we pool our resources together, and I know from a scheduling standpoint, I know from a high school standpoint, it's way more effective to do so with more students.
We're going to, we're going to tee up three video clips in just a second, but I wanted to clarify something. As I, I got the impression that most of the people in the room, be they teachers or moms and dads, they didn't want to consolidate anything.
Nope.
They wanted all four schools open, and then the amount of upgrades is sort of, maybe they're a little confused by the amount of money and upgrades, and what you get for your money, and that kind of thing. And the administration, to my surprise, came out firmly, squarely, and solidly against consolidating middle schools. Did you get the same read?
Yes, yes, he did. I don't want to consolidate middle schools either. I mean, middle school's tough. I started my career in middle school.
See, I think that was in one of the two alternatives, Ralph, and came as sort of surprise that suddenly that's off the table, you know?
Well, I think...
Well, it was kind of ended up as a hybrid of some of the options, because I don't think anybody's really in favor of consolidating our middle schools.
So, we got three video clips. We're going to start with the first one, who I believe is Lou Fiala, who is the president of the Teachers' Union. At this stage of the evening, the audio was not that great at that microphone, and so I took some notes as to what he said, even I, after replaying it and playing it back, I missed a couple of words. But folks, as you listen to this video, it's 40, 45 or so seconds, he says something like this, in part, in the clip. "Over the, over the last 10 years, we have moved from, from one, I missed the word, from one to another with little follow-through, running, running towards the next thing, without fully planning or vetting the rollout of the next step. We went from elementary configurations, Common Core, mastery-based learning, personalized learning, Capstone, Mindset, Wallingford 100, STEM Town, and a couple of other things that I, that I couldn't get." But he then, at the very end, said, "There are too many curriculum changes and too many administrative changes." Bruce, let's roll that clip, and we'll come back and talk about that one. Three, two, one, go.
I've asked them to speak tonight on behalf of their opinion. I don't want to leave anyone out. Over the last nine years, we have moved from one initiative to another with little follow-through, running towards the next thing, without fully vetting the plan of the rollout. Whether it's elementary configuration, Common Core, mastery-based learning, personalized learning, Capstone, Star of the West, Mindset, Horizonte, Wallingford 100, STEM Town, Power School, Lawson, and Havensburg. Too many... Too many great changes to count in the national industry.
So, I'm glad I kind of read the transcript, but at least it gives you a little bit of the atmosphere in the room, you know?
Yes.
After he said some of those things, there was, there was some applause. But Aaron, what's going on here? There's obviously some bigger issues going on in the school system, and the head of the Teachers' Union wasn't embarrassed, afraid, or intimidated about them, and I kind of know what he's talking about with these approaches to learning, which I don't think are terribly new, but they're recast in a, anyway, you take it from here. What's going on with all that?
I was a little taken aback. I was surprised that that came out, to be honest with you.
Any truth, though, to what he said?
If, if that's how they're perceiving, then absolutely, that's their truth. Yeah, there has been a lot of changes, definitely been a lot of changes. I think some of those changes are coming down from the state level, but some of them are local decisions.
Ralph?
It's very unusual, one of the things that you would do as a superintendent and a Board, if you wanted to move forward with a project like this, is you would bring the Teachers' Union into the fold before you had this happen in public. So, I was really surprised.
Well, I'm glad he, frankly, I'm glad he said it, and I think if the, if the teachers and Lou Fiala weren't thoroughly frustrated, it wouldn't have been said.
Right, I agree.
But at the time that the statement was made, I think what they were faced with was something called themed high schools, which would be a huge disruption, you know, on the student body, the faculty, and pathways, which could be a disruption too. And I think the underlying message was, we've seen a lot of herky-jerky kind of curriculum movements, we just want to teach. And I, he said it, and I'm sort of sympathetic to that.
I'm sympathetic toward that too, and I'm a little disappointed that generally, when the Superintendent of Schools is reviewed, what we're told is that the biggest criticism of him, or the biggest concern, is that he works too much. And that is frankly insulting to a taxpayer, to almost anybody. I mean, no one is saying that, I mean, the Superintendent may be doing a good job, but he's making $200,000 a year, and we should hear some constructive suggestions on how he can improve his performance, not be told that the biggest problem, or the biggest concern of the Board is that he works too much.
I don't want to get off on that, on that tangent unless, yeah, let's move on. We got another clip, and this one is a little longer, but it gives a sense of the feelings, the atmosphere, again, in the room, and the opinion that the Board of Education has to deal with, you know, the facts on the ground. Bruce, let's roll that second video. Three, two, one.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Mallie Sachi. I live on 9th Drive here in Wallingford. I have three children, one who has graduated, and one that is currently a freshman at Sheehan High School, and one that is currently in fifth grade at Fritz Elementary. So, there is four parents who had sent ahead to the Board a letter that we hope you've all had some time to review today. We just wanted to read pieces of that letter. We put together some research, and the research suggests that smaller high schools function best academically and socially, at enrollment around 600, 150 students per grade, which is considered the natural group size of humans. Our schools are close to those numbers now. Smaller schools produce more student satisfaction, higher graduation rates, increase athletic participation, and foster stronger connections for students and staff alike, as well as the community as a whole. There's lower rate of absenteeism, dropout, behavioral issues are considered, and schools are considered safer, because students feel less alienated and more connected. We definitely feel that now with our schools, and we want that to continue. We feel that having two middle schools and two high schools will make sure that that continues to happen. Teachers also feel they can make more of a difference for students in smaller schools. Since the need for mental health treatment among students is on the rise, we are again to decreasing staff in our schools. Option six has listed having a significant loss of staff. We believe that students with mental health issues will be more readily identified in smaller schools. While smaller schools may have a higher cost per student, they have a lower cost per graduate due to lower dropout rates. Currently, Sheehan and Lyman Hall both have graduation rates of 94% and 95% respectively. We're all concerned with school violence and mental health issues. Although the size of the school is not the cause of violence, research shows that smaller schools are less likely to experience acts of mass violence. Also, transitioning from a smaller, more supportive school to a larger, more anonymous school may make pre-existing mental health issues worse. We're also concerned about the transportation issues, such as costs and extended time commuting across towns if the schools were to be consolidated. For parents who need to pick up children in both middle school and high school, it may be nearly impossible to get across town in time of traffic. Additionally, the current option three is the only option that explicitly notes increased transportation costs. It lists the estimated increase in cross-town transportation of $525,000 to $900,000, when in actuality, all the options one and two would create the need for cross-town transportation, and therefore, transportation costs would increase in all of the other options. Finally, our tradition of two middle schools and two high schools has created a unique sense of community here in Wallingford, resulting in a small-town feel. It is one of the many reasons families choose to live in Wallingford. Our students have wonderful opportunities off of it. And we have high participation on a broader level. We have twice the number of teams, enabling more students to have access to this invaluable experience. We believe that combining our schools will reduce these opportunities for our children, and will have a negative impact on their middle school and high school experience overall. We hope that you will consider keeping our schools the way that they are and renovating them. The traditions are rich in this town. People really choose to live here. People really choose to live here because of those traditions. Yes, powder puff is one of those traditions. There are other ways to do that, but traditions are what made us who we are. We have traditions in our family, and we have traditions in our communities. Thank you, that's great. Thank you, that's great. Thank you, that's great.
So that was a, an effective argument in favor of keeping all the four schools open. The argument for smaller schools, more intimate atmosphere, more opportunities for sports. They talk about traditions like powder puff and the crosstown rivalry, which is a big, you know, it's, it's on, on people's mind. Transportation issues, how long you're gonna have to sit on a school bus, things like that. I'm not sure of the acoustic quality of the next clip. Bruce, let's roll that clip.
Good evening, Board members, Wallingford Teachers Community. My name is Mark Britton. I hold up your course address, and I have three students in the Wallingford school system, one in Daggett Middle School, and two at Los Angeles right now. So it's encouraging to see that we're looking at six different options. It's fantastic that it brings us out here. It's really positive times in Wallingford. Currently, my line of thought is I support two middle schools and two high school options for many reasons. Talking often because of that. Kind of sort of renovate to do options, but I think more importantly is maintaining the diversity of two middle schools and two high school options. When we look at this, we're looking at the best and not just for the students, but for the town in general, right? When people move into a new area, they're looking for a great education system, right? Good businesses. A long-term, a lot of positive aspects to it. And District Reference Group D, which puts us in towns like Rocky Hill, Newton, Southington, North Grandford, Grandford, etc. Most of those towns are half the size of Wallingford, which is why they have one high school. Many of them, the population only 15,000. So, and when we compare ourselves to our surrounding towns, Mary, Haddon, Cheshire, North David, North Grandford, and Durham, we do okay, but if we look at some of the statistics throughout, the state greatest in educationally were five out of seven towns. And we can do better, right? We can do better. So I think when we go to a consolidated high school, we look at the consolidated high school options, there are some advantages, which I mentioned, and our student mentions as well, which are true, the increased curriculum activities, we can do lots of increased sports. What we lose is a lot of intangibles. Like when we look at smaller schools, right, they have decreased absenteeism. I'll try and re-ear. Increased absenteeism, increased climate, increased security concerns, we're looking at smaller, not concerns, just increased security, we're looking at smaller schools. We can do a better relationship with our students, there's less places to set up the height, they'll get lost, when I say height, they'll get lost in the system. I'm a teacher there, there's one through two renovations, I teach at a high school level, I come to the 1,200 student school right now, so I have some experience with a large high school.
But Erin, address some of those concerns. I mean, I believe your Plan A is one big high school, so just develop that a little bit.
So I hear where she's, where they're both coming from, both of those citizens that stood up. So she talked a lot about mental health, and I cannot, there are students that are in large high schools, and there are students that are in small high schools that deal with mental health issues. And there isn't a, you know, there's, there, as a board and as a community, we have really honed in on that, and we've added school psychologists and social workers to the elementary school. So I can't see us removing that at a high school level. There are a lot of things that you can do at a larger, in a larger school to make it feel smaller. So I, I hear those concerns. My biggest concern would be the transportation piece, because we all know how hard it is to get from one side of town to the other. So that would be my biggest concern, and, and we would have to really dig into that transportation piece, I think, if any of these things are gonna move forward.
So your, your Plan A, one big high school, just, what would it look like? Just sort of walk it through your, your vision for that, and the advantages.
So, well, from my perspective-
Yeah.
-the advantages of a larger high school come with, like I said, the additional programming. Right now, we run class sizes of really small class sizes in some certain AP courses. So let's say, you know, you want to take AP chemistry, but you also want to take advanced manufacturing. And in a small school, you run one section of each of those, right? So they run, sometimes there's conflicts, more often, there, there's quite a few conflicts.
I mean, timing, scheduling conflicts.
You know, if there, if there's, you know, the way it works out, there's a lot of course offerings, but for those single courses that we run, sometimes there's conflicts and kids have to choose. And when you have a larger group of, or a larger student body, and you may be able to run two or three or four sections of a course where, before you didn't, it gives kids more choice and more opportunity to say, well, I don't have to not take advanced manufacturing, or, you know, computer-aided drafting, I can do it that period, and I can do my chemistry this period. So I think from a scheduling standpoint, and actually Superintendent Nicoletti stood up at the end, the former superintendent, he stood up at the end and made some, some points that I've been thinking about right from the start, and he talked a lot about that.
Can you review what, what-
Sure, he talked about this, from a scheduling standpoint, he talked about, from an athletics standpoint, that we would have three full teams at each level, so you have freshmen that are playing against freshmen, and you have 16-year-olds playing against 16-year-olds, and 18-year-olds versus 18-year-olds. Whereas sometimes now, you have kids that may not be ready to play at a RC level, but who are.
So Ralph-
Yes.
Imagine, if you will-
Uh-huh.
I'm gonna recast it a little bit, using my words, not Erin's. One large trophy high school-
Right.
The cutting edge of everything, the most advanced designs inside and out, I mean, it would look spectacular. It would something you could drive your relatives to and say, this is our new, this is the new Wallingford High School. We hope it to be a powerhouse academically, no one really knows, you know, powerhouse athletically, culturally, et cetera, et cetera. Sure, it costs with, with, with increments for inflation and construction increases over the years, maybe, you know, in the 60 to 70 range when it gets going, because I think the architect said three to four-year inflation per year until you start it, you know, until you begin. So that's the price tag. You're 60 million, 70 million for something I just described, and Erin, just describe, you're a taxpayer.
Right.
Well-
I'm open to it.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not sitting here saying-
Wow!
And it's based on-
Erin, what do you think we got on, right?
Right, and it's based on this, that-
They should hire me and Erin as, as-
You did an excellent job.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just that, you know, in, among the towns we cover, Southington, which is about Wallingford size-
Yep.
-has one high school. It's one really big high school. It's like, and the world hasn't ended over there.
Smaller budget-
Okay, they have a small-
And more students.
And they have more students, okay.
They have about 500 more students-
Even more, Erin backs it up.
About, about 5 million, I think, I think their budget's about $5 million less than ours is.
Okay. There's more, more, more backup for that.
I'm gonna change the subject for a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, to get in some background, some context, some dollars, and things like, things like that. So this all started, in, in, in my view, because in 2014, the mayor gave a state of the town address, and he said that we may not be able to afford two high schools due to declining enrollment. That was picked up in the press, probably two or three stories about that. And once it gets in the press two or three times, whenever you have a plan of conservation and development, which is a 10-year theoretical hypothetical, sort of a wish list of things you might be able to do, consultants pick up these articles, and, and consultants who draft the plan of conservation development put that sort of issue in the P O C D. That's what the consultant did in this case. It is the same consultant who was pitching their plans in front of the Board of Ed, same people. And, but the expectation probably was, at least to the mayor, let's save money because enrollment is going down, and then the, this new school renovation plan is popped, and lo and behold, it's not a money-saving plan, it's an opportunity, it's an opportunity for a huge new capital project. So there's a little, you know, some frustration which I went into before. People thought, well, consolidation of schools must mean saving money? No, it does not, it does not mean that. I want to put some things on the table because people may get the impression, listening to sort of one side of it, the town has been neglectful with respect to the Board of Ed, it has not. The school renovation project, chapter one, you know, was concluded 2007, most of the work was probably '03, '04, and '05, though. That was $73 million, we're still paying off the bonds. School roof replacement project finished 2013, that was about 12 to 13 million. The Board of Education has a capital improvement fund, about 15 million has been spent out of that since about 2011. In addition, the town spends about $7 million on education functions in addition, periodically, you know, operating expenses, insurance, things like that. In addition to the board's budget, which this year is about almost 102 million, and lately, in the last three or four years or so, the Board of Education has had access to its own surpluses. The last three years, I added them up, it's about $2,100,000. And something like this was never contemplated during the budget preparation, you know, go back as many years as you want, something like this was never contemplated in the board's strategic plan. Weight those factors as you want, I just want to, you know, I just want to get them out there. We're gonna go into more detail on further shows as to what this 15 million has been. And there have been capital improvements, come on, they've been capital, it's out of a, a town capital improvement fund. About 15 million has been spent. Erin, let me defer to you. Any reaction to what I just put out on the table there?
So the prior building project, obviously I wasn't on the board for that. So, and I think that's part of my point, is that I don't want to spend, I don't want to continue to spend on these capital projects from year to year. If our enrollment is declining to the point, we're looking 10 years down the road, I think Sheehan, and this is a medium estimate, is looking to decline by 23%, and Lyman Hall is at 19%. And at the state of Connecticut, and, and how families are growing, they're growing at a smaller rate than they were, and they're moving out of state. So I cannot see a giant influx of residents that's going to increase our enrollment. And it's happening all over the state, our state schools are at a, at a low enrollment. We've got magnet schools closing all over the place. So I don't want to put, like I said, I don't want to put 120, 140, 150 million dollars into four buildings, and then we find 10 years down the road that we can't sustain those. Our enrollment are so low that we can't sustain those.
Bruce, we have a JPG hanging around your, your computer board there. If we could throw that up on the screen quickly. This is where I, is sort of detail for the numbers that I was describing. Keep that up there a little bit. So there you have the list. There's something called the CRA fund that the, the town draws upon and distributes, and so we have money being distributed from the CRA fund in addition to the capital projects fund, and that's what it, and that's what it adds up to. Bruce, if we can take that one, take that one down. So Erin, is this idea for major capital renovations driven by the fact that the schools are in such bad shape that we need to spend this money one way or another, just such bad shape, we gotta spend it? Or is it driven by new educational opportunities, programming, more room for the teachers to walk around the classroom? What is driving this?
It just has to be either or, maybe both.
Say, mix them up, I mean, it's fine, whatever.
Yeah, I think, I think there's quite a few factors that drive it, the lowering enrollment, um-
Let me stop you there, though, before I get to- Why isn't lowering enrollment a reason not to renovate? You have more space, more classroom space available. If you have declining enrollment, why renovate to have new classrooms when you have classrooms all over the place because of declining enrollment?
So, well, that would bring to the next point of updating our facilities, right, to 21st century education.
What's that, what's that mean, though?
Yep, so I went back and I looked at the, the classroom, actual classroom sizes at Dag and Moran.
Yep.
So the original classroom sizes at Dag and Moran are 550 square feet. And 550 square feet probably worked, it did work, I mean, I went there, obviously, it worked for years when the teachers stood in the front of the classroom, and they had a 40-minute block that they were lecturing at, at the students, and students with special needs or students with behavioral issues just weren't in those classrooms, they were housed elsewhere. So I think that that worked at that point. And now, here we are in 2018, and that's not what our 21st century education is looking like. So the, like I said, it was 550 square feet in that old, those old classrooms, and best practice, what, what's recommended is between eight and 900 square-foot classrooms, an open concept with movable furniture, so that kids now that are in a 68-minute block at the middle school level, and kids of all different levels and abilities are in the same classrooms, can move around the classroom, can get into small groups, then break into large groups, we would have, you know, I suspect power outlets in different places, access to technology, and things like that, just to move us forward. So, so I think that, yes, we need some upgrades to our facilities, and I think at the same time, hand in hand, if we consolidate, we can kill, kill those two birds with one stone.
Ralph, I want to get you in on this, but I, I want to, I want to add a thought to, to Erin's point. One would think that if you hire a consultant who is supposed to specialize in this, who brings along an architect, and they present a plan which ultimately runs as, as much as 117 million dollars, that they would have, they would have some background, some state of the literature, some, some data studies as to how large the classrooms are in other schools, in other states, in other towns in the state, and they would have this sort of laid out. So you have a basis of comparison as to whether Wallingford classrooms, given the amount of pupils in the classrooms, whether Wallingford classrooms are too large or too small. States have guidelines, in fact, the state of Connecticut has a guideline as the size of the classroom. We didn't hear anything about that. That should be laid out, and, and the, and the size of the classrooms in each of the schools should be side by side by comparison, not that the state guidelines are binding in any way, but there's some objective outside source as to size of classrooms. The literature that I, and, and by the way, I just stumbled on this preparing for the Citizen Mike Show, so if I just stumbled on it, I mean, this should be readily available to architects, engineers, consultants who do this kind of work. Lay this out, now maybe they did, and they handed it into Salomenzo, and he chose not to distribute it. That could be, I have no idea, but this is obvious stuff. But the reading that I did, it's not the size of the class, it's the density of the, of the class. How many pupils are in that class? And so if you feel your classrooms are too small, too small for what? For the number of students. Then reduce the number of students in that classroom, and don't spend 117 million dollars. That's a management problem, that's not a school facilities problem. And you say, well, we don't have the space, but we do. Enrollment is shrinking, haven't you heard? Facilities are inefficient because they're too big for the student body. So if you have classrooms that are small, put fewer students in there, and you're back to the density you want. The kind of information that Erin was talking about is, you know, the square footage and that kind of thing, that belongs in an objective report that reflects the state of the industry and the state of the literature, and compares schools across the board. And it's very frustrating not to have that, yet we're jumping sort of ahead to say, oh no, we gotta rebuild, we have to redo as new all these schools to have bigger classrooms when it's really a density problem, and we have a lot of space, I guess, excess space anyway, which is a reason for this. Erin, your thoughts on my thoughts?
That still doesn't address effective teaching and learning in the 21st century. So we could-
What is that-
So we could decrease.
What does that mean? I don't even know what that means.
So, so when, when, even back when I went to middle school and high school, it was the teacher standing at the front of the room and he or she is lecturing at us. And we're taking notes and we're spitting back on the tests what we learn. And now, you know, we are looking at flexible grouping and we're looking at a larger blocks of time. The high school's on a block schedule with 84 minutes. The middle schools are at 68 minutes. And so we expect that our teachers are differentiating their instruction and providing for opportunities for all different types of students to learn within their classroom. And that looks like a lot of small grouping into larger grouping. The kids are moving around the classroom. They may be at different stations within a, within a class period. They're not sitting there for 68 minutes, ideally. They're not sitting there for 68 minutes. They're not sitting there for 84 minutes, listening to a teacher lecture at them. And they're using technology, which would also be incorporated into these classrooms.
You know, if the problem is that bad, I would like the superintendent of schools, Dr. Menzo, to sign an executive order. No more lecturing. Just stop it.
Well, I'm not saying that.
No more lecture. I don't care if it's French, American history, no more lectures.
I'm not saying that it doesn't happen and it shouldn't happen at some point. I'm just saying, you know, that it shouldn't happen the entire block of class.
Yeah. Ralph, any thoughts?
Well, just.
Yeah.
How the workplace has changed. And in our workplace, what you need is, and we have them, we have spaces that have monitors like we have right here in the studio.
Right.
That are looking at, computers, you know, you plug your computer into them, and that's how we meet. That's how we learn. That's how we go over things. So I, I don't know. I haven't, my, my kids are older now. I haven't been in the schools. But do schools have spaces like that?
There are, there are some. I, there was a media center, you know, at, at Lyman Hall. But your typical, traditional bulk of your classrooms do not look like that. There are smart boards, but they don't look like what your workplace might.
Right. And I'm not saying that those things cost $200 million and, and that you can't change spaces that already exist. So.
Well, I, we're gonna have to take this up on, on another show, but I don't want to confuse furniture and fixtures with smashing down classrooms and building new classrooms.
Nor do I.
Just so the teacher can move around. I mean, that's about the thinnest argument. And it didn't come from the school administration. It didn't come from educators. It came, the state of the record, from an architect.
Okay.
All right. So the case has not been made. I mean, anecdotal stories of the Board of Ed are appreciated, welcome, and valued. But, but that isn't a decision, those aren't reports upon which you can base $117 million. I mean, that's from an outsider looking in. That, that's not how we should be making decisions. Erin, I want to make sure I understand you on one point. Are you saying that the schools, all four of the schools, Sheehan, Lyman Hall, Dag and Moran are in such bad shape physically that we have to spend this kind of money to fix them up?
That, that was one of the pieces that I wanted a little bit more data on. I don't want to spend that much money. No. I don't want to spend 150, 160 million dollars right now.
But I'm, but I'm asking your understanding of the state of the schools because, yeah.
Yeah, I think they need, I think they need some help.
Well, has the, the deterioration and degradation of the physical plant been under-reported, under-emphasized, kept a secret? I mean, what's going on here?
No. I think you're right in that the public doesn't always know what's going on. So Patty Purcell, who's one of my fellow board members, suggested that we put facilities on every single operations committee agenda, so that we can discuss the state of the facilities and that, that can be a public session. And I think that's a brilliant idea, because we do need to learn more about that and educate our public about that.
Is there a dollar number that is in your range of acceptability? I, I know it all has to be worth it and there has to be value for it, but is there an upper limit?
I, I mean, I mean, my limit would be that option six.
And that's 50 to 60 million, I mean.
And, and, yeah, yep.
Ralph, do you think voters, taxpayers would, Town Council, Mayor would buy Erin's plan?
Well, I think, I think it would have to be communicated much better. I don't think right now, the council or the mayor, I don't want to speak for them, but that's just my sense that this would be a tough sell.
So we're beginning to run out of time. And Erin, I want to give you the last word on anything you want. I'm catching you, I'm catching you a little off-guard and I, and I apologize for that. I guess the, the next board meeting, I think you may narrow the choices even more?
Yeah. So it would be a full, the next board meeting is Monday night. It's a full board meeting. And so narrowing, narrowing the choices wasn't on our.
Agenda.
Sent agenda. It was a little bit mixed up. So that's what would be happening at the, at the full board meeting.
And I think, this is really a question. I'm gonna make it as a statement, though. I think what we're talking about is renovating all four schools.
That's one option.
I think, my reading the tea leaves is, that's the favorite. Renovating them as new. Are there five votes? Do you think there's five votes for renovating as new all four schools?
I, I think we're all waiting for more information, to be honest with you. And then, and then, once that more information comes, I would expect an even deeper study as to what exactly this means.
And the final word is, what are you looking for? What information are you looking for? What do you need?
Well, I, I agree with Ralph that more information needs to come out of the, what, what's exactly wrong with our facilities. So, you know, I think that needs to be shared with our public and with us a little, a little bit more. I mean, I kind of have an idea of what's wrong, or what's going wrong, or what's failing. But it would be nice to have it out there.
Let's make that the final word. Erin Corso, thanks for coming on the Citizen Mike Show. As always, you're a good soldier in a brave sport and we appreciate it. We really, we really do. And thank you, viewers, for tuning into the Citizen Mike Show. We are here Wednesday nights, but you can watch Citizen Mike Show nine o'clock on Thursdays, Fridays, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesdays, or on YouTube. Go to the Citizen Mike Wallingford channel. You'll find the Citizen Mike Show there. Follow all the prompts and you got it. Or we can send you an email with a direct link to the YouTube, the show up on YouTube. Thanks, everyone, for tuning in. And again, thanks, Erin Corso. Good night, everybody.